Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the Select Board's meeting for Monday, November 30th, 2020. This evening's meeting will be a little different. Two of my colleagues are remote this evening. Joined with our Administrator Travis Searn, Ms. Tina Heine and Ben Sparle are remote. Hi, guys. How are you? Before we begin, because this meeting will be held under virtual circumstances, I need to read the opening statement and then we'll get right into our agenda. Pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020, the Select Board will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout this meeting. At this time, a roll call vote will be taken. Ms. Heine?
Here.
Mrs. Sparle?
Here.
And John Cronin? Here. So, we are underway. Hi, folks. How are you? Good to see you all. We're going to start our agenda a little bit out of order. There are some significant weather events making their way through Holliston this evening. Multiple areas of our town are without power according to Chief Cassidy, so we're going to try to adhere to some of the more urgent issues up front. We do have a timed classification hearing for tax purposes at 7:30, so we're going to have to stick to that. But anticipating they will have power, we'd like to get out of the way immediately the warrant. If I could have that, Mr. Searn? So, playing the role of Ben Sparle, I will read the warrant. This evening's warrant totals $725,102.59, let us see, of which, I'd like to say, $229,444 is general warrant, $358,425 is death service, $4,728 is performance deposits, and so forth. Oh, and $131,303 is town payroll of a motion to approve the warrant at $725,102.59.
This is Ben. I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it, John. It's Tina.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Tina Heine, aye.
Ben Sparle, aye.
Thank you very much. The warrant is approved. Do you require a second signature on that?
I will take care of that. We'll have to send it to one of the houses.
Okay. Sit for the warrant. Great. The next item is, we're going to take Chief Stone out of order. He's here this evening to talk about EOPS grant awards and a traffic update. If you could join us, Chief. In one of the hot seats there. Wherever you're comfortable.
So, I was asked to give a brief update, traffic safety update, including a traffic safety grant that we were recently awarded. And with all the traffic discussion over the last several months, I wanted to bring the board up to date on what HPD is doing to address a lot of the issues and concerns and a lot of the work that's being done behind the scenes that aren't necessarily publicized every day. I'd just start, the most important thing to note is the traffic safety education enforcement has always been a top priority of the Holliston Police Department, as noted in our two strategic plans over the last three years. In the past three and a half years, in regards to traffic, we've transitioned to e-citations, printers, and every cruiser. We received grant funding for the purchase of a new LIDAR unit. We've added a traffic enforcement cruiser to our department's fleet. We've recently created a traffic advisory committee. We've applied for and received several state grants related to bicycle pedestrian safety, impaired driving, distracted driving enforcement, seatbelt enforcement. We've added a motorcycle to our department's fleet to help with traffic enforcement. We've partnered with programs such as Safe Roots to Schools to promote pedestrian and bicycle safety. And just recently, in the last two years, we've held a bicycle safety event before the beginning of the school year. Coming up more to date from this summer on, beginning in August of 2020, we began to formulate the idea of a traffic safety unit. I tasked Lieutenant George Lorini and Sergeant Matt Waugh with this and asked them to come up with a few different ideas. The traffic safety unit, or the mission of the unit, is to make Holliston's roadway safer for our residents, bicyclists, and pedestrians, thus increasing our community's quality of life. Through collision statistics, traffic patterns, volume, and other data, police can target the times and locations where enforcement and education resources will benefit the community most. We will continue to be, traffic enforcement and safety will continue to be one of the most main functions of our department. In the past, over one-fifth of our time has been dedicated strictly to enforcement and education purposes. The development of a traffic safety unit will provide a multifaceted approach to addressing several of the community's concerns. The unit itself will be supervised by Lieutenant Lorini, a daily supervision by Sergeant Waugh, and part of the recommendation of the traffic safety unit was to create a traffic safety officer position or an assignment within the department. That was August of 2020. In September 2020, right on the heels of this traffic safety unit formation, the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Office of Grants and Research, posted a law enforcement grant opportunity through the Burn Justice Assistant Grant. This is part of the item that's on the agenda tonight. This grant allowed for one-time federal funding to address local law enforcement equipment, enforcement, and programming needs. Using our new traffic safety unit guidelines, we applied for a $40,000 grant through VOPS under the Burn Grant. I'm happy to report that we were notified last week that we were awarded $28,000 for the equipment that was requested through this grant. This is a significant development for us, for our department, and for the community at large. Of that $28,000, we'll be using debt funds to purchase commercial motor vehicle scales, a mobile data terminal for our motorcycle, a e-citation printer for the motorcycle, a license plate reader, and other equipment. The grant itself will allow us to do many of the items that we cannot do now based on the lack of the equipment. Following the timeline in September of 2020, the Traffic Advisory Committee recommended to the Select Board that they take action to adopt Mass General Law Chapter 90, Section 17C, which essentially gives the Select Board, in the interest of public safety without further authority, the ability to establish a speed limit of 25 miles an hour on any roadway inside a thickly settled or business district in the city or town on any way that is not a state highway. And on September 29th of this year, the Select Board took the tax recommendation to adopt Moving forward to October 2020, a traffic safety officer assignment was posted to all members of the department. I'm happy to report that Officer Charlie Grace was selected as our department's traffic safety officer. He will be attending training in the near future in the areas of crash reconstruction, impaired driving, motor vehicle law, and eventually, commercial motor vehicle enforcement-type training. In addition to events that happened in October related to traffic, we met with members of the Mass DOT and conducted site visits to discuss roadway safety around town. Moving to November of 2020, we have applied for a grant through the International Chiefs of Police Association to host regionalized training for advanced roadside impairment driving enforcement, also known as ARIDE, and drug recognition expert training courses here in Holliston. The grant is upwards of $100,000, and we should be hearing toward the beginning of 2021 calendar year. Fast forwarding to what's next for traffic safety in terms of Holliston Police's approach, December 2020, we have an item on the special town meeting warrant under the Traffic Advisory Committee requesting speed, volume, and measuring equipment devices that will help us address the tax traffic petitions that we have been receiving. In January of 2021, Mass General Law 90, Section 17C will become live in Holliston. We'll be using a variety of messaging platforms such as electronic signboards, social media, town HPD websites to educate drivers and pedestrians if this new law is in effect. Our goal is to balance education versus enforcement. Lastly, traffic safety is a task that we all share together. It is our hope that through a combination of education and enforcement, we can improve the quality of life for all of those who live, work, and visit the Holliston community. We are always, HPD is committed to safe, efficient, orderly movement of motor vehicles around over the roads and highways within our community. So, just as a brief update, that kind of brings us from where we've been in the last few years to just recently, over the summer, how many different traffic-related initiatives we made from within the department.
Thank you very much for that update, Chief. I'll allow my colleagues to ask some questions if they have any. Let's start with Ben.
Hi. This is great, Chief. It's great to hear we got this grant, so congratulations, and I appreciate you reaching out to try to secure this funding, to help the community. Just a couple of quick questions. Just so I understand, I'm not as well-versed as some of my colleagues might be in traffic, so I might ask some naive questions, and I apologize. But the first is, is one of the things that was of particular notice to people, aside from speed, was noise levels, like things like engine brakes and things like that. Is there any capacity within this grant equipment or anything like that to be sort of looking at some of those things, or can we do any of those things, or am I just barking up the wrong tree? If we put up a sign that says no Jake brake or no engine brake, is that kind of just, what does that serve? So, I guess I'll have a little bit of information about noise in traffic.
This particular grant that we applied for, the equipment did not include noise monitoring devices. I do know of equipment that's out there and that was available for purchase, but this particular grant did not include that. We concentrated on materials that we could use almost at the immediate acquisition of those pieces of equipment and hopefully moving toward additional equipment, up to including those noise monitoring devices.
Okay. So, my only other, the only other thing for me is more of a comment. So, my job in the private sector is analysis, and one of the things that I particularly find important when I talk to people about it is to basically to create that baseline to sort of an understanding of what you're comparing yourself to. Are you comparing yourself to last year, or, you know, particular things? So, I'd particularly like if maybe at some point, we could sort of establish a baseline of sort of like where we are right now with our traffic, with things like how things are going and such, so we could sort of track to see how and where, if possible, to see where we're seeing success or where we have some challenges in traffic with education and enforcement. Because I just sort of like to understand sort of like what's working, what isn't, you know, are there places that we need to emphasize a little bit more or to look at? And I think it would be important if we could sort of just sort of establish like what are the criteria, like what's going on right now before we start implementing some of this equipment, so that way we can really see and speak to how we're doing and what we can do better if there's some gaps in our enforcement and tracking.
So, Mrs. Sparle, to your point on that one, that's why our request under the Traffic Advisory Committee came as it did. A lot of the petitions that we're receiving have to do with data in terms of speed and volume, and right now, we don't have the tools or equipment to address those particular petitions. So, our goal is to use the equipment that we have as a request on special town meeting to deploy those types of equipment, and you're having issues on this street, or you're saying there's volume on this street, is to use that tool that we are going to acquire through traffic solutions and say, as a matter of fact, this is when the peak times are, or this is when we're seeing speeding, so that we're not deploying resources and officers to areas based on just a petition, but we also have data to back that petition up.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
You know, Chief, before we get to Ms. Heine, just to follow up on Ben's point about comparing yourself to something, it's my understanding that maybe related to this, you've reached out to other communities to talk about different ways that they deal with traffic enforcement, specifically commercial, because that's an emerging area of need. We want to talk a little bit about that, because I think you're learning something that this traffic safety unit can probably start to build on.
Yeah. So, several communities around us are all facing, because we have more people, we have more volume, we have more businesses, traffic's affecting communities all over us and all over Metro West. So, we continually meet, or I continually meet with other departments or the chiefs and say, what are you doing out there? And a lot of the biggest, the difference that we found in our communities, we don't have the equipment to measure where we are at this point, similar to what Mr. Sparle said. We don't really have a baseline. Right now, we deploy officers to where we think the issues are or where we're receiving complaints. The complaints aren't backed up by data, and what we like to do is deploy resources to where the data is showing us is needed. We don't want to enforce commercial motor vehicle enforcement on side streets that aren't seeing commercial motor vehicle issues or problems related areas. So, a lot of our neighboring departments are using the data that they collect from these software programs, filtering it through some type of unit, if you will, and that's what we hope to do, is have the traffic safety unit report in conjunction with the Traffic Advisory Committee, and eventually, the long-term goal is to have the traffic safety officer be on the Traffic Advisory Committee so that both hands are doing the exact same thing. Right now, we're working in two different silos, and we'd like to see that kind of come under one umbrella.
Another way to put this, I think, is to also suggest Holliston's not in a bubble. You're collaborating with other communities to develop best practices as the traffic safety unit comes and gets stood up. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. And like I said, we are not the only town or community by any means that is facing the traffic, you know, concerns.
Tina, do you have any questions? Or Ben, are you all set? Tina, you're up.
Okay. Hi, Chief. How are you?
I'm well, Ms. Heine. How are you?
I'm good. Hi, John. Hi, Travis. You know, to your point about things happening behind the scenes, I would just build on that to say that, you know, my experience working with you and hearing you make your presentations and talking to you about all these issues is that you, as chief, and the Holliston Police Department as a whole, have continually consistently made traffic safety and enforcement a priority. I see it through your budget process. I see it through how you chase down these grant opportunities, and so I think your presentation tonight really demonstrates how your consistent approach and the HPD's consistent approach is building, and we're seeing a lot of the fruits of that labor. So, congratulations on the award. You know, to hear that we'll have scales and in-time trained officers to use those scales, I think is a very powerful thing for the town of Holliston. We have not seen that before. Is that correct? We've never had these scales, or in recent history, we've not had these scales in place for use by HPD?
In recent history, we did have scales back in probably 2007 or 2008, but it was one of those things we just never used and we never practiced, and they sat on a shelf and weren't used. So, that's obviously the opposite goal that we have now, is to try to use them on a regular basis and get results from that.
Could you just speak a little bit about, so in terms of speeding violations, the town of Holliston sees very little revenue generation from them. The majority, vast majority, goes to the state. It's different for commercial violations. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, is it fair to say that Holliston will see, well, we haven't seen fines in recent history from commercial vehicle violations, and that that's something that will likely change?
Over time, yeah. Fines and violations for commercial motor vehicles tend to be higher, the consequences, the punishment is higher just by statute, so the citations that are being issued are often higher or larger. And I know the percentage, and I couldn't quote the percentage right now, but commercial motor vehicle fines, percentage-wise, is split differently than, say, a passenger vehicle speeding violation or a stop sign violation.
Okay. I'm all set, John. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation.
Thank you.
One of the things, Chief, that I know Holliston is about to encounter is this board adopted a change to Chapter 90, Section 17C, is some upcoming changes in speed limits and so forth. Talk a little bit about how this feeds into that change and how your department's going to help us enforce that.
So, part of the request, again, at Special Town Meeting is for messaging signboards and for getting the message out there. We have a very strong presence, HPD, as does the fire department in the town via social media, so our goal is to get that word out and to educate the motorists before we start enforcement. And I would reiterate the importance of balancing education and enforcement. Although enforcement is a part of our job, and specifically under HPD, that's the majority of our job, the idea under the traffic safety officer is to do just as much educating as we are enforcement. While we like to write tickets and fines and so forth, the idea is to change behavior overall, and I think by educating the motoring public and the pedestrian public first is most important. So, come January, I plan to see a lot of messaging, signage, reminders that these new law, or this new law is in effect.
That's something that you probably want to feed into our board come late December or so, as we get closer about the messaging and the public notice about how enforcement will come about. I only have two simple questions. First is, is there a match on this grant?
There is not.
Okay, that's great. And when does the grant expire?
So, there is an expiration date. We just signed the paperwork today because we did apply for overtime funds as well, which was not awarded to us for training and enforcement, and I believe the restrictions were higher on that one in terms of when you could use the overtime funds. Everything we were awarded was through, was for equipment. So, as soon as we get the funds, we purchase the equipment, we submit the invoice to the state, so as long as it takes for that process to go through, we fall within guidelines for sure.
This is a federal grant? It's the Burn Grant?
This is the Burn Grant, correct.
You applied for $40,000, is that correct?
Correct.
And the amount of this grant is $28,827.77.
Yes, sir.
So, whatever adjustment it was in your application, you've already been made aware, you can't do that, this is what we funded. You're clear.
And there is an opportunity for a, I guess you would call it a rebuttal, and to basically justify why we would need that $11,000. So, we're in the process of submitting that rebuttal and just saying, even if we can't get the full difference, you know, maybe a portion of that difference to assist us for that.
Well, first, as my colleagues indicated, very much appreciate the grant writing and the success of obtaining this grant. I think, you know, Chief, we need your help moving forward as we, as a community and as a board start to tackle the emerging and ever-present traffic issues in Holliston. So, it's complicated, but with your help, I know we can get there. So, thanks so much, and thanks to your staff for a great grant-writing success story here.
Thank you. And I would, at one point in my career, I did write the tickets myself and was out there doing the enforcement, but I would be remiss if I didn't give the credit to the men and women that are out there on all three shifts, 24 hours a day, conducting those traffic enforcements and writing those tickets and educating. It's really the men and women that deserve the credit. I'm just up here reporting back to what they're doing, so I give them, not all of it, but most of it, the credit.
Before I let you go, we'll see if anybody on our Zoom calls any questions about your report. Anybody have any comments, please? Say no, Chief. I hope you have a pleasant evening. Safe drive home.
Thank you. You as well. See you.
All right. We're going to move on to our agenda now. I'll pick up with coronavirus community update from Chief Mike Cassidy.
Mr. Chair?
Good evening.
With regards to the situation status that we have right now, as of this evening, we are up to 226 cases. That's 189 who have been reported as recovered, two COVID-related fatalities, and as of this evening, 35 active cases. As of the Department of Public Health's weekly report, which was issued last Friday, we, for the fourth week in a row, are in the yellow risk designation. We had an average daily incident rate per 100,000 in the 14-day reporting period ending the 21st of November, 25.5. That was the highest number that we've been at since we began seeing the community-level data. Our percent positivity for the 14-day period ending November 21st was 3.52%, which was also the highest percentage that we have seen since we were seeing community-level data. And our total number of positive cases in the prior 14 days for the period ending November 21st was 52. That also was the highest. In the previous three weeks, it had done 35, 33, and 33. To note, that 52 total positive cases in the 14-day period ending November 21st is almost the total case count that we had in late May through mid-July, which was 56 cases. So, we have seen a significant increase in the number of cases since the spring. Currently, again, as I said, our active cases this evening is 35. During the month of November, when I come in and report it to you on Monday nights, those have been 31, 29, 34, 34, and 35. So, we've been pretty consistent in terms of our number of active cases when I've reported to you on Monday evenings. Our active cases reflect three clusters at single-family homes, two individual cases at a housing complex, four individual cases at multifamily dwellings, and 17 individual cases at single-family homes. Our 35 active cases are spread out over 26 addresses. I would note that as of last Wednesday, we had seen a 17% increase in the 10 to 19 age range and a 13% increase in the 30 to 39 age range from the prior week. Department of Public Health data published late last week also shows that over 70% of Metro West residents live in a yellow zone. So, just as you were having a conversation with Chief Stone about the fact that we're not the only one dealing with traffic issues, we are not the only one dealing with a surge, we are not the only ones who are in the yellow right now. Our use of social media has been somewhat successful. We saw 1,700 people were reached and 186 engagements on the town hall, Town of Holliston's Facebook page last week. Just a reminder to the public, the travel order is in effect. Only Hawaii, as of Saturday morning, remains on the list of lower-risk states. So, if anyone was traveling related to the recent holiday, they must comply with the 14-day quarantine requirement or meet the 72-hour testing rule if they were coming from a, anywhere from other than Hawaii. Based on the travel seen over Thanksgiving, Dr. Fauci is predicting a surge upon surge is the term that he used in coming weeks. And again, we are not in a bubble ourselves. Rhode Island sent out an emergency alert today indicating that all of their hospitals are full, and they were urging a two-week pause for their residents. Last week, the state issued updated guidance for conduct of town meetings. For the most part, we already were right on track with everything that they had to say, everything from if you're a member of an at-risk population, or you're not feeling well, you should stay home, they were recommending reducing the quorum, talking about making sure to distance the seating, making sure that we have directional flow, making sure everyone has their face coverings, cleaning and disinfecting, and then obviously contact tracing for any positive cases related to someone who may have attended. So, these are all systems and processes that we have in place, which were very successfully implemented with our July 20th annual town meeting. We are working very closely with the schools. They are monitoring a lot of different situations right now. They are contact tracing actively for interactions that have happened with students outside of the school setting. We do want to keep an eye on our positivity rate, as well as the status of the high school, as either one of those could impact the ability to conduct town meeting successfully on Saturday. That is it for my brief overview.
Any questions for my colleagues? We'll start with you, Ben.
Yeah, I have two things. First, Chief, could you, was the increased positivity rate partially due to maybe more people getting tested in anticipation of traveling over the Thanksgiving holidays? So, I guess my question is, did we see a large, an increase in the number of tests administered as well as the positivity rate?
We have not seen that bump yet. The numbers for the 14-day period were through the 21st of November, which is the Saturday before Thanksgiving. So, we saw about the same number, 850 to 950 or so, tests in the 14-day period leading up to November 21st. So, it will be this Thursday's report where we will see the bump associated with pre- or post-Thanksgiving, well, pre-Thanksgiving testing.
Okay. And the second thing is just sort of a comment. I read an article this, the past week, and it sort of crystallized a little bit of how the importance of what this is for the community and the importance that we all, and the roles that we play. Basically, the summary, the little soundbite, if you will, was it might be an individually rational decision to get together with friends, but it can be collectively disastrous. And I think that's sort of what is important to hit home, is that, you know, we've gone back and forth with friends of ours who keep saying, well, you know, you guys are in a bubble, you guys are, you know, you're being safe, you're being careful, and there's, I have friends who actually have been very careful and still got COVID. But the fact is, is I think we all have to remain vigilant, because we might make, individually, we might think we're making good choices, but if everybody makes the choice to do things and get together with people, then it becomes a much greater problem, and that's how the virus spreads. So, I just thought that was something that was very impactful for me, and I just wanted to sort of indicate that to other people, that, hey, you might think that this is a good choice for you, but if everybody's making that same choice, it's not good for all of us, and that's something I think we need to keep in mind. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Heine?
Chief, did I hear you say that Thursday brings new data?
Thursday, the Department of Public Health will issue their weekly report again.
All right. And should we anticipate another update before next Monday?
I will send you a community-level risk designation update, usually on Thursday evening, once the numbers come out from DPH.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Chief, a couple of questions for you. Clearly, the trends that we've all been talking about are staring back at us. I think, Ben- I think Ben's message is something that we all need to listen and repeat and practice. Um, however, leading up to this Saturday, we are scheduled to have a special town meeting. At this point, as our emergency management director, do you have any reason to think that we should consider changing or altering that course, given the public health information we know today?
Based on our current metrics, I am comfortable that we can safely hold town meeting on Saturday at the Holliston High School.
Okay. Um, you had mentioned some time ago that if positivity reached a level of five percent or more, that might alter your thinking.
Correct.
Do you see us trending in that direction by Saturday?
I do not believe that we should get to five percent with Thursday's numbers. Thursday will be the, the time that we get the positivity rate from the state. I do not anticipate that we would spike all the way to, uh, five percent from our current three-point-five-two.
And so certainly, you know, looming ahead is some, um, statistical bad news. Um, if prognosticators and health professionals, um, and what they have to say comes to bear, the next several weeks and months will be very difficult. Um, one of the things that I think we've done, uh, is to try to think of things pragmatically as a board, and with your help and assistance, um, institute as many tools and initiatives as possible to keep people safe. The public service announcement strategy that I know you're practicing right now is one of those prongs. Have you noticed anything else from other communities that Holliston should have a look at, um, as we approach these dark days of winter and possible increase in COVID, uh, cases?
I think the key is very similar to the approach that you discussed with Chief Stone as it deals with traffic, recognizing that we're not in this, in a silo, and that our approach needs to be consistent with other communities. And this is the approach that we've seen with statewide leagues restricting interstate travel, uh, communities have, are making decisions right now with regards to the winter sports season for high schools. And one of the things that's being discussed actively is, should there, should there not be fans in the stands? And that's a, that's a big decision, but this needs to be a united approach, because it doesn't work if just Holliston sends no fans in the stands. If Ashland has fans, Hottentown has fans, Medley has stands, so fans in the stands. So I think what we want to do is make sure that as we partner with our colleagues in neighboring communities, and as we're on these conference calls collaborating with Departments of Public Health and with, uh, other emergency managers, that we are all consistently sharing the same message, just as Mr. Sparrow was mentioning, that it's not just an individual decision you're making, but that it has a ripple effect for your community and your region.
Holliston's a so-called bedroom community. It's a community of families and neighborhoods. Um, we obviously thrive, like many other communities, with social circles. If I read correctly from your most recent, um, report, there's, there's certain community spread going on, and there's some, there's some indication from the statistics in Holliston that it could be more localized with families sharing, uh, small social gatherings and things like that in their homes. Do you have a message for that type of an event going forward?
Yes. Uh, we would implore people to sacrifice now for the benefit of the entire community throughout the rest of the winter, uh, because, again, they could be potentially, and unknowingly, spreading the disease to someone who then brings it back and shares it with their grandmother or some other at-risk person, and we just don't want that to happen. So as much as, uh, as good as our community was back in the spring when everything was shut down, and so many sectors of our society were, uh, were closed off, we really need people to continue to isolate and just spend time with their household, and restrict their, their activity and their interaction with people outside of that small intimate group.
You know, I think it's a, it's a great point of emphasis. I note that Holliston reporters on the line, and they do cover our meetings, and they'll report out tomorrow what was said and done this evening. I would ask that, uh, they put a special emphasis on your remarks, uh, for those who might not be listening tonight, to carry forward and understand. That sacrifice is a short amount of time, hopefully for a more safe outcome down the road. Any comments, uh, from anyone on the Zoom or questions for Chief Cassidy regarding the community update? Hearing none, we will move on to the CARES Act programmatic updates.
I have no requests from any of the boards or committees this evening.
Very well. Uh, thank you very much, Chief, we appreciate your update. Point we'll move on to, public comment. Um, Ben Sparrow, you're up first.
Um, I think the only comment that I have at this time is wear a mask, let's be vigilant, let's have a nice holiday season, but let's, let's curb this. We can do this, we can, we can kick COVID, and we need to work together to do so. So that's my only public comment today, so thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Yeah, I have, I have no public comment tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to, uh, just recognize the passing of a gentleman, um, from Holliston. Bill Stickney passed away last week. Um, I happen to know Bill, uh, more socially and in passing, but I, uh, when you, if you, if you live in Holliston for the last thirty, forty years, you knew who Bill was, um, you knew who Bill's wife is. Um, he was, um, a great person in many ways. His obituary was beautiful, you could see a life well-lived, and, um, to behalf of the board, we want to extend our, our condolences to the family of Bill, uh, on his passing, but recognize he was a true Hollistonian, he will be missed. Uh, any other public comment, uh, coming in on our Zoom call this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the comment from the town administrator. Travis.
Great. Um, so I guess we have a couple of things. So at, at seven-thirty tonight, we'll have the opening of the tax classification hearing. Uh, I see Kathy Pierce on the line with us, so, um, we will time that for seven-thirty, but for anybody listening, in the event that we lose power, the plan is to, uh, open that hearing this evening and continue it to next week. Currently, uh, scheduled for twelve-seven, um, so the hearing would open tonight, continue to next Monday at this time. Um, I just wanted to cover a little bit of our look-ahead schedule here. This Saturday, obviously, one P.M., high school is the special town meeting, the select board is posted for twelve P.M., an hour ahead of time in the library, um, for any business. Uh, the finance committee is meeting tomorrow night, uh, and I will be on their call to discuss any last changes they have, um, to, uh, recommendations. Looking ahead beyond that, as I said, twelve-seven would be, um, a continuation of the tax rate hearing. Beyond that, I'm also looking at potential public hearing, um, which I have not yet scheduled for an update on the solar project at Marshall. Um, some information is coming in from Seoul Systems, and once that is in, and I feel like we can have the public hearing, we'll post that publicly. Um, so we, we will probably be looking to do that in December, um, and at the very latest January to keep us on track. And then the last two meetings, as I look ahead for the, the rest of this calendar year, um, you know, we have scheduled twelve-twenty-one and twelve-twenty-eight. If we were to hold both those meetings, I think what we would certainly want to make sure that we're doing, uh, whichever dates we end up holding, uh, is that we will bring back, obviously, Chief Cassidy and, and be looking to close out the, um, the CARES Act funding, uh, which has a twelve-thirty deadline. Uh, I think we have the plan in place to, to get us, uh, through the calendar year. Um, still waiting for a little bit more guidance, but I think we need to, we'll be prepared, uh, whether we get more guidance or not, um, to, to close out the CARES Act, which was obviously, uh, instrumental in, in getting us through, uh, to this point through COVID. Um, a couple of other things I just wanted to mention that I'll be bringing forward to the select board, uh, in the coming weeks. Uh, it was brought up on a previous select board call that there is, uh, an interest from multiple groups, um, for trash pickup in the Blair Square area, been in communication with the Pick It Up Program, uh, a learning service program through the high school. A couple of students are, are looking to, um, pursue, uh, trash in the Blair Square area. Also, the rail trail committee has brought that to me, and, and I think it was last week, if not the week before, I'm losing track of time a little bit, but Ed Daniels hopped on the select board call and is also interested in that, so I'll be following up with DPW and then bringing that back to the board. Just a couple of things on the facility side. Uh, the side door replacement at the library will take place tomorrow. That is a previous, uh, approved CARES Act spend that the board approved a few weeks ago, uh, and we are still hoping, um, for some updates when it comes to the town hall doors. That was obviously not a CARES Act spend, that was a long-awaited project, uh, I think we're moving in the right direction, but it, it has obviously taken longer than we would like. Um, but can't wait for that to be done. That is all I have at the moment.
Do you have a comment on the doors?
On the doors for town hall? Um, so the, the last update that I actually just got, um, is that the final drawings were sent to the manufacturer, uh, door hardware was approved, um, that will have card and FOB access ready, um, and when the doors are completed, uh, we'll get a delivery date very soon. So that's the last update I have on those.
Any comments for the town administrator? Uh, Mike, okay, go ahead, Tina.
Uh, so, Travis, did you want us to take a look at the calendar for December? Uh, we got a little time, I think, before the hearing starts, um, at seven-thirty. Do you want us to make a decision tonight about December twenty-first and or twenty-eighth?
I, I think we'll need one of them, um, certainly. So I think if I had clear indication, but obviously the chair and, and the group, if you're not ready to make that decision now, I, I'm just sort of looking ahead a little bit.
Um, I don't have a calendar. So in each case, the holiday is at the back end of the work week, uh, our meetings being on Mondays. Um, what are, what are your availabilities, Ben, Tina, for the twenty-first and twenty-eighth? Any preference?
I'm around. I'm around, and, um, uh, you know, I, I, I would, I would probably say, you know, like, I would ask Travis what, you know, for, for his input on what would work best for him too, so he gets a chance to not have to put together a packet on Christmas.
Tina?
Uh, my preference would be that we meet one of the two dates, and that we meet on the twenty-first and not the twenty-eighth. I am totally open to that. Um, so if there's a preference by you, John, or by you, Travis, I'm fine, but I would say, first off, let's just meet one of the two dates.
I would agree with Tina. Let's, let's target the twenty-first as the final meeting date of the calendar year. We can meet again with certain notice if things change, but, um, that way we'll be able to, uh, plan for year-end, um, CARES Act spending and any other things you need to wrap up. I think Chief Cassidy and I can have the, the CARES Act, uh, closeout numbers to you by that point, so I think that would work.
That's great.
We can plan on that.
All right. I don't think we had any other questions for the town administrator at this point, so our next item on the agenda is for, um, a tax classification hearing. Hi Kathy, how are you? We're gonna hold off until seven-thirty, which is what time we're posted, uh, so in the interest of time, we're gonna move forward with some other business and circle back. Okay, Kathy, so stand by. Um, we next on the agenda have an annual license renewal discussion. Mr. Hearn, if you could introduce that item.
Sure. So it was last week, I, I recall that now, uh, time isn't blending too much. Um, Ms. Hein was calling in from Toronto and mentioned that there are some towns in our area that have looked at the annual license renewals and, um, either reduce them to help out businesses, um, or remove them. Uh, I know NADIC was referenced, I believe they cut them in half, and then I would bring some data back, so I did present that info in your packet, um, and I would just reference, thank you to Donna Muzzi for pulling all this information together, and then, um, I just put it all on one sheet for you. But essentially, restaurants with full liquor licenses pay a twenty-five-hundred-dollar, um, license to the town. We have four of those, uh, which is an annual revenue of ten-thousand dollars. So the memorandum that goes out to those businesses did go out October first, uh, the payments are due at the end of, uh, December. We, in addition, have, um, full, uh, all alcohol beverage and then partial wine and malt licenses, and we have common vittler's, victual's licenses, I'm sorry, I still cannot say that word.
Actually said it, it all came up there.
Um, entertainment licenses and then some other licenses. So I've just presented all of that information here for you to, to show you the scope, um, and I could certainly answer any questions that you may have, uh, for discussion.
Uh, let's start with Tina, if you don't mind, Ben. I'm gonna go to Tina, because she brought the question to us, um, last week. If you want to bring this a little bit more full circle, Tina, let us know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so again, it came to my attention through hearing what other communities are doing, um, but it also raised up to the level of wanting to do something about it because of, of what we've been hearing from businesses in town. And I think this board, since the start of the pandemic, has taken an approach to try to help wherever we can. Uh, I think that's been consistent right from, from mid-March. So to me, this all feels very similar, like this is an opportunity, a way in which the Town of Holliston can help businesses that have been impacted. So I did a little research ahead of tonight, um, you know, the list that's, uh, that Travis prepared has auto dealers, has wine and liquor, um, shops, and then restaurants. And for me, the restaurants really stand out uniquely. Um, they were impacted right up until phase two, and even then, I think it was step two of phase two, uh, which was late May, June. Uh, Chief Cassidy's in the room, uh, he can probably, uh, provide more detail if you're looking for it, but they were impacted in terms of how they could provide, how they could, you know, operate right through until late May, early June. That's not necessarily true of every other business, certainly not liquor stores, and they're impacted, again, with this most recent, um, advisory from the governor where, um, they're needing to close at nine-thirty. So to me, they're hit, you know, when I, when we look across that list that you prepared, Travis, I see the restaurants hit, perhaps, in my opinion, and that's all it is, um, they, they seem to be hit hardest in terms of impact. And so that, that's what I was bringing to the board last week. The information's very helpful, Travis, thank you. Um, and so what I would put forward is that we look for a reduction in the licensing fee for, um, restaurants, a reduction or an elimination. I'm open to hearing what you, John, and what you, Ben, have to say, but that was the idea that I had brought before the board last week, and, um, you know, my, my thoughts really haven't changed on that.
Okay, Ben, I'll give you a chance to circle back if you wanted to contribute anything to that.
Sure. Um, uh, looking at this list, I, I think I share what Tina said, and, uh, John, you had mentioned it last week as well, that, um, I think we, we do want to restrict it more towards thinking about restaurants. I don't feel comfortable opening it up to some of these other, um, businesses, because I do think restaurants have been hit particularly hard, and, and I know, um, there was a brief couple of years in my life where I actually worked in a restaurant, and having a, being able to serve liquor is kind of critical. Um, and I, I, I would, I'd be open to, to looking at those particular licenses, just those, those four. Um, you know, you know, maybe we, we explore, um, you know, cutting in half, maybe we explore doing something like, um, uh, you know, not having the payment due until June, I don't know. I mean, just, I think, you know, maybe we could look at something like that, maybe we push it off till June and then sort of see how we're doing, how things are going or something like that. I, I don't know. Um, my only concern about this, this process is I kind of want to just be careful how, how we tread. I want to help, I really do. I really want to see if there's, if there's any way that we can help some businesses, but I also want to be careful about precedent setting and just sort of how we go about doing it, just to make sure that we, you know, that we're, we're clear about the, the nature of this assistance and the timing of it, and, um, just to, just to be, you know, I, I can be overly cautious sometimes with some of these kinds of things, but that's, that's just something I want us to be cognizant of as we make this decision. So that's kind of, I'd like to either explore maybe cutting in half or maybe putting off the, uh, the pay, the, the, the due date till later in the year.
Okay. Uh, Travis, did you want to add something?
Yeah, so just to, um, Mr. Sparrow's point, one thing that, you know, I, I discussed this with finance staff, um, with Sharon Emrick and Mary Bousquet, and one thought too was, you know, we, we have policies that are in place, um, you know, we don't issue licenses until, uh, for example, a restaurant was up to date on its taxes, right? So one idea too would be if, if what you're trying to do is provide flexibility would be to say that we will issue this license, obviously. What we're trying to do is help the businesses keep going, um, and, and not stick to that policy for this year, right? Something along those lines. So I just, just to sort of give multiple options there, that, that would be one. Uh, other option in, in addition to what you're, you're currently considering.
Um, Ben, I presume you're well set at that point? Um, my thoughts are that I wanted to see the full breadth of licenses that Holliston charges institutions. So, uh, I know folks at home can't see what I'm reading, but, um, what Travis has provided is a list totaling twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred dollars a year in licenses, um, that a variety of different businesses pay in. Um, the, the bundle of, um, license fees that Ms. Hein is talking about is ten-thousand dollars of the twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred. The remaining license fees come from packaged stores, ten-thousand dollars, wine and malt licenses, sale of liquor in other words, uh, forty-five-hundred, and then very small numbers for entertainment and common victual licenses, um, and one used car dealer. And then very small numbers for entertainment and common Victualer licenses, um, and one used car dealership, uh, class two license. These numbers are relatively small compared to the restaurants with full licenses and of course the package store. I have, um-
Sorry, just for one classification point, I didn't list them out. There's actually nineteen class two used car dealers at a hundred dollars a piece.
Got it, thank you very much. Um, the, the gist of this though comes back to the restaurants with full lic- liquor licenses. There are four, each of them pay twenty five hundred dollars a year. Um, I, I, again, um, going back to my remarks last week, I do not see any need to provide relief for packaged stores, uh, or wine and malt licenses. I'm, I'm akin to what Ms. Heine is suggesting, that the restaurants, um, have borne, um, a fair amount of, uh, financial burden during the COVID, um, crisis. And these four institutions, the Anthony's on the Green, Bar Athena, Bertucci's and Casey's Crossing, uh, are the four that pay into these full liquor licenses. Um, and given the circumstances and the relatively short amount of money that we're talking about, I think I would, I would entertain cutting the restaurant full liquor license in half, uh, for each of these, uh, four institutions, uh, for fiscal year twenty one, with one stipulation that they are all in good standing with the payment of their respective, uh, taxes. And I think that's something that your office can help secure. Is that correct, Mr. Hearn?
We can.
Um, is that something anyone would like to make a motion on?
John, can I just add, um, one comment to that? In, in your suggestion there, the fifteen hundred or, so you said fifty percent reduction, so it'd really be twelve fifty, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is that something that's due as normal, you know, in a non-pandemic time now as we renew these licenses? Or are you willing to consider that the extension for this twelve fifty could go through till June thirtieth?
Um, talking about the payment that's due December thirty first, which is just, just for this calendar year.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, just wanted to clarify that.
Is that right, Mr. Hearn?
They're all due at the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
Um-
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you can make a motion, go ahead, because then I'm going to introduce it to any questions. Go ahead, Tina.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the select board reduces the licensing fee for restaurants that serve beer and wine, uh, sorry, liquor, excuse me, to twelve hundred and fifty dollars. So a fifty percent reduction in the, uh, licensing fee for restaurants for the service of alcohol.
Okay, now, any discussion from anybody on our Zoom call?
I thought I saw a hand from Mary.
Uh, Mary, are you raising your hand? Mary Greendale?
Hello, there, took me a minute to get this thing. Um, I just had a question about, are there any other of the smaller, I'm thinking of deli, I, I don't know, that corner deli thing, uh, country deli and basils, do they sell, do they have the beer and wine licenses? And are they, is there anybody else that you need to think about in that same vein?
So they're, they, they do have common Victualer licenses for a host of organizations, uh, that don't serve liquor. The wine and malt licenses, um, apply to Crafted, Central Cafe, The Corner Market, which is I think what you were trying to recall. Uh, so they're just selling beer and, beer and wine. Um, the, um, the common Victualer licenses, licenses, fifty dollars. Um, it's not, doesn't compare to the license fee that Ms. Heine has been discussing.
Okay, so then I, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to put this in a way that is more of a, something to think about than a question, I guess. Normally, in, in using state funds, when we did things that were related to economic development and so forth, we always had to state what the public purpose was. I don't know if that is of any value to at least include in the motion. Um, something for you to discuss, I guess. That's it.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll second the motion and I'll sort of speak to that, which is basically to say, um, uh, it's a, it's a good point that the, the public interest is, is that some of these, um, restaurants are, they're an important part of the, the community. And I think we want to show our support for some of these, uh, some of these, um, uh, businesses in, 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 in a way that we can, um, to just, and, and to indicate, um, that we, you know, we support them and we want to see them remain. And we want to see continued economic activity in the community. And this is a small, tiny token way that we can try to, to do that.
And to be clear, I think one of the things that differentiates them, uh, Ben, as restaurants from the packaged stores or Walt and wine and malt licensed stores is these restaurants were closed for an extended period of time, unlike the packaged stores, uh, which have continuously been opened. Um, the burden that they've had to face to staff, um, prepare food, serve food and make it available to, um, customers is different. And that's why I felt obligated to look at them under a different lens. I have a motion and a second to approve Ms. Heine's, um, uh, motion. And I'll take at this point, all those in favor say aye.
Tina Heine, aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
And John Cronin, aye. That concludes the annual license renewal discussion. Thanks Tina for bringing that up. I think it's, uh, some, some measure of relief for our restaurants. We still have a couple of minutes before we get to our seven thirty tax classification hearing. Uh, let us not take a, let us not take a motion to approve the select board meeting minutes for November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve said meeting, meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion, Tina Heine.
Ben Sparrow, I second it.
Uh, and all those in favor say aye. John Cronin, aye.
Tina Heine, aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
Thank you. We have a request from the Shabbat Center for lighting requests of the menorah from December fifth to December twentieth. Um, this is, let's see, menorah for the duration of Hanukkah, it's an eight to ten foot tall menorah with electric bulbs, same as every year, celebration on December thirteenth. Um, I'll entertain a motion for the request of the exterior holiday display.
All right, Tina Heine, I'll make that motion.
Ben Sparrow, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Tina Heine, aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
John Cronin, aye. Wrap that up. And are we close enough to seven thirty to at least start talking about this, Travis? Or-
Why don't we introduce, uh, who we have on the call? And by that point, it'll be seven thirty.
Do you have the, uh, tax classification hearing doc, document to read or shall I use the electronic version?
Uh, I just have the electronic version.
Okay. I got that in the packet. Okay, so Kathy, how are you tonight? Kathy Pierce, can you unmute?
Yep, I'm good. How are you? How's everyone?
We're doing all good. So joining you from, uh, the Board of Assessors will be Ms. Greendale?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Nope, I don't think that, uh, Leslie was unavailable this evening. And, um, Peter might be joining us, but I'm just not sure, so.
Good enough, okay. So we are, uh, obviously going to open our tax class, annual tax classification hearing this evening, hear from you folks about its content, maybe have a couple of questions if there are any from the board. But we will not close it. Our intention is to leave it open, uh, until a week from now, following town meeting, where we will, uh, take the actions of town meeting, uh, to close the tax classification hearing. Everyone has understood on that. All right, so at this point, I will, uh, read the tax classification notice of public hearing. The public hearing for tax classification will open at seven thirty PM on November thirtieth with the select board and the Board of Assessors. And after discussion, the hearing will remain open and be continued to December seventh, twenty twenty at seven thirty PM, after the special town meeting can conduct business on Saturday, December fifth, one o'clock, the high school, um, auditorium. The classification hearing determines whether the tax rate will shift among use classes of residential and commercial industrial personal property. And in addition, other potential shifts within classes will be reviewed. At this point, I will take a motion to open the tax classification hearing, hearing.
So moved.
A second, yes, Tina Heine.
Ben Sparrow.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye. Aye, John Cronin?
Tina Heine, aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
Okay, it is seven thirty, the classification hearing is open. Kathy, Mary, we'll turn it over to you if you want to give, uh, your opening remarks.
Thank you, um, tonight for, uh, meeting with us. Um, at this stage of the game, we do not have final values. We only received preliminary certification on Friday. And, um, I want to thank Chris Mayo, Mary Greendale and Sean Reese for helping me get the word out for the hearings because we have a five day window, or a five day hearing schedule where, uh, um, the public has an opportunity to schedule appointments online or call the office and discuss their values. And after that five day period, we close it up and then give it back to the Department of Revenue where we will have final values. Um, so we, it's a very, very tight schedule. We are in recertification, they've changed some of their, um, and when I say they, I mean, the Department of Revenue has changed some of their requirements as we've gone from a three year program to a five year program. Um, and so, and on top of that, we've gone through the conversion, as you all know. So we are on a tight schedule. What I can tell you is what our, uh, preliminary released pre-certification values, uh, you know, what they're doing. And, uh, and, you know, but specifically, I, I can't really give you any fine numbers um, until I get that final certification. Um, in general, the overall town increased value by five percent. Uh, residential class as well, five percent. Condos went up seven percent, commercials four percent and the industrial, uh, three percent. I did not get a, uh, percent change for the personal property. But, um, we did contract out this year and we have quite a significant amount of, um, new personal property accounts. But with COVID, we don't know how this is all gonna, you know, we, we don't know what's going to happen with COVID with, in terms of, once this is committed, how they're going to end up being, uh, accepted. We, in odd, uh, an odd thing, uh, is that the market has increased, um, steadily from, from FY twenty to FY, uh, twenty one. It's very minor, the average tax, the average sale price last year in Holliston was five seventy one. And now the average sale price for, and these are looking at twenty nineteen sales, was, um, five seventy five, eight hundred. But the market has continued in twenty twenty to kind of go crazy. There's a ton of competition in the mid-range property values. And they, I, I read an article by, um, and I can't remember who it was by, but Forbes, actually, that they're attributing this to people, you know, young professionals and so forth, working at home now. And basically, they want, they're nesting, you know? They're nesting, they're working at home, they want a safe haven and they want to live in the suburbs. So, um, they've created a new market, which is ironic because there are so many in our communities that are suffering. Um, but, you know, people want to be safe. So that, it's creating an oddity in the market for, and, and we'll be watching that for FY twenty two. Um, but getting back to FY twenty one, um, the average assessed value is four ninety nine, five, uh, for single families. Um, and that is up from four seventy one, which is about a six percent between the two averages. Um, but then your averages shift, so, you know, the, there, there is a range in there. You, you're pointing at a, you know, the middle, um, the average of all of these and, um, it's been an interesting market. But that's where we are at this stage of the game. And, um, next week, we will have the fine details for you. We will get into discussions about, uh, whether to maintain a tax rate of one or to split it um, amongst the commercial, um, commercial industrial and personal property. Um, and we can talk about the, uh, residential exemption, which is splitting amongst the residential. And we can talk about the commercial exemption, which is splitting amongst the commercial base only. So that's where I have, that's what I've gotten. I, uh, I appreciate that you're bearing with us to, um, get this all together in a fine bow, uh, for next week.
Excellent, Mary, do you have anything to add?
I do, I just want to remind the public that we are still available for, um, little Zoom meetings if anybody has any question about their own assessment. Now, folks may not realize that they can go on the town website and go to the assessors page. And there is a pre-classification, I think that's the title of it, that, that, um, pre-certification, pre-certification statistics are all there. You can just look up your address and see, um, what was, thank you very much. You can look up your address and look at, go through the searchable pre-certification property assessments. Look at what you have and what it was. Um, I will warn you from, uh, my own personal experience, not with this current assessment, but I sold a house in twenty nineteen that was in Queens. And so, um, I know that, that that house and, and others in that neighborhood went up significantly more than just the five percent that is the average. You have to remember that somebody is at the high end and somebody else might be at the low end, end up in the middle like that. So bottom line is that, um, you have the opportunity to schedule a meeting by clicking on the here, H-E-R-E type of here. Thank you very much. And, um, you can schedule, all you have to do is do it online and type in the, um, day and time. And those hearings are just going through Wednesday because we need time to then send any adjustments that we need to make back to Boston and then get everything wrapped up in that cute bow that, that Kathy was talking about so that we can actually get tax bills into the mail, um, after next Monday. So that's my plug. Call us if you have a question.
Thank you. Any questions from the select board? Uh, I'll start with you, Ben.
Um, nothing right now, I think I'll have more, uh, next Monday.
Very well, Tina?
Uh, Kathy, could you just speak a little bit about the three percent change for industrial properties? You mentioned five percent value changes overall, seven percent on condos. Uh, and then you said three percent on industrial properties. Could you share any more information about that?
Um, the methodology that they use to value property is primarily through the income approach to value, which is looking at what properties rent for. Um, you know, although, you know, we're looking from data from twenty nineteen, which is pre-COVID. Um, what, what we've had in the past has been relatively modest. We haven't had a lot of industrial growth. There, there were, um, you know, there are a handful of projects in town that are sort of processing or, uh, pending um, that might make an impact to that number. But right now, um, that's, that's what we've got. You know, we've got a pretty solid existing base. And, um, those values are, they don't fluctuate a lot. So, um, we follow the trends that we have. Um, this year, we did hire Tyler, um, uh, to do valuations on them. And we haven't, because of the Tyler software we have, uh, they built models, uh, that different types of property, i- industrial, commercial, fit into and they're applied, you know, systematically throughout. So once again, with that three percent average, there's always a range. Some will go up and significantly more and some will go down significantly more. There's always the, the average of threes, you know what I mean? So, um, specifically, uh, nothing's jumping out at me in terms of anything.
Okay. Um, and then were you surprised by any of these valuation changes?
Not really. Um, you know, the board tries to be as conservative as possible in their ranges. But this year, we are coming in at ninety seven percent of market, which is a little bit higher than typical. We try to stick around the ninety five percent, um, that level of assessment. Uh, even though that's a little bit higher, the values are still, you know, five percent, um, as an average, you know? But once again, there's always ranges. So, um, you know, we recommend, um, everyone to take a, a look at their data. And it, it's an opportunity for us to, you know, make sure that the data is accurate and that the values make sense. So we've already had a few hearings and, um, you know, some things have been brought to our attention. Um, so, you know, we are reviewing things and the board's meeting on Thursday to get into that a little further too.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, did you want to point out something?
Yeah, I did. I, I wanted to point out, you know, most of us, uh, fear having the tax collectors have information about their houses and so forth. But in all truthful- about their houses and so forth, but in all truthfulness, we, there are many occasions in which we will find that there are measurements that are off, or people are being, you know, taxed for something or not taxed for something. It really is an opportunity to try to get your file clean, so that there are no surprises for you, because eventually, if and when you sell your house or whatever, eventually it catches up, and so there's this bigger bump, or else there's maybe something that needs to be changed in the file. So, it's kind of a better-than-a-bad thing, you know? As I say, it's kind of like going to the dentist, maybe we don't all love it, but still, you know, we do try very hard to keep everything as cautious and conservative as we can. And as Kathy mentioned at first, we're still astonished that the prices, the values of houses is continuing to climb and climb and climb, and that's all really, really good news if you own a house. But, you know, sometimes people own houses that they've owned for 40 years, and so the drain on them is horrible, horrible. So, anyway.
That's sort of a segue to, you know, the opportunity for people also to look at exemption availability and to reach out and see if they do qualify. A lot of people, they just don't. So, every opportunity you get to educate and, you know, let people know what they are entitled to, you know, we're all for that. So, I encourage people to reach out to the office. We have brochures, our website is pretty stocked with data and information on exemptions, so, you know, please avail yourselves to that.
Kathy, I have a couple of questions, especially for the folks at home. The data that the Board of Assessors use to compile the assessed values is based upon home sales from a given period of time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you tell us what time period that covered?
Yes, so, 2019 are the sales we look at for single-family residents, because commercial properties don't sell as often, we go back 15 months and take that data, and we have to be within a range of statistics that are, that meet guidelines that the Department of Revenue has specified. So, they're relatively stringent, and we have to stratify significantly by, for example, square footage, by the age of the property, by the effective age of a property, by, you know, the style. You know, honestly, if we had the color, we could stratify by that, too, because people say, yellow houses sell. I don't, I've never really found that. However, we do stratify it, we look at land values, we looked at, we, in Holliston, we tie to the zoning, so our zoning is, you know, our prime site, and we look at that, we take into consideration wetland, traffic, topography, you know, any kind of detriment that could go along with that with a residential property. We look at everything we can, because for us, data is, helps us to build the picture, and if the data is wrong, then the picture's not right. And we want it to be as right as we can be. It's never going to be perfect, but we want it to be as right as it can be. And we need the public's help for that, which is one of the reasons we're always knocking on your doors. So, does that help? Does that answer your question, John?
Oh, yeah, a lot of information, Kathy. I guess I wanted to make the point that the values that you're analyzing are primarily from a period of time pre-COVID.
Yes.
And that if there's any effect within Holliston specifically since March, that won't be felt until next year.
Correct.
Looking into what you know today, a question for either you or Mary, can you determine if there's been any trend of foreclosures or other signs that the market in Holliston is trending in a different way than what we've customarily seen for next year?
It's actually very active and very competitive right now. So, competition pushes those values higher. I have not really looked at any of foreclosures. We used to get notices on a regular basis, but I haven't, honestly, I've been so busy with trying to build this revaluation, I haven't had a chance to really look at that. But that's something I can look into for next week and perhaps report back.
I appreciate that. Thank you, because as you know, our budget is built upon property values. We're a community that, you know, funded services through the values of homes, and any dip in that will obviously spell some trouble times ahead, and we'll be talking about FY '22 soon enough, and these are the kind of markers that give prognosticators like Mr. Hearn and others the chance to see what's about to happen. So, if you've seen any signposts relative to values, I think would be good to share. Okay?
Okay, and one of the things that I did notice was that this year, although we're not certified for our growth yet, we have been compiling it, and it's a lot better than I ever thought it would be. I can't remember what we submitted last year, but we're close to 800,000 this year, and to me, that was a surprise. So, there's a lot of people at home, and they're fixing their house, you know, they're taking out little permits here and there, and I think we've all seen that, maybe we've all done that. And so, that was a surprise to me. But, you know, where this is going to go in terms of FY '22 will be very interesting moving forward.
Any questions from anyone on the Zoom call for our friends at the Board of Assessors during this tax classification hearing? Will you get your hand up, Chris? Good? All right, so at this point, we are going to release from the tax class of hearing, the classification hearing, we'll leave it open, and we will catch you folks next week. So, thanks very much for joining us tonight.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Folks, we've arrived at the final point of our agenda, which is other business, so I'll ask Mr. Sparrow, Ms. Hein, if they have anything to share under other business this evening.
This is Tina, and I have no comments for other business.
This is Ben, and I have no comments for other business either.
Okay. The only thing I want to end on is that town meeting is this Saturday, is within advertising. We hope to see people arrive at the auditorium at the high school for assembly at 1 o'clock. All signs are that we have a very streamlined warrant that hopefully will receive its due discussion and deliberation without much fanfare, and we can make our way out of the auditorium in time to go home and deck the halls by a tree or shop locally. So, hopefully, everybody will get the message out, would love to see you, hopefully briefly, this Saturday, December 5th, 1 o'clock, again at the Holliston Auditorium. Anything else on our Zoom call before we adjourn under other business this evening? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Ben Sparrow.
I'll second that, Tina Hein.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Tina Hein, aye.
Ben Sparrow, aye.
Thanks, folks. I hope you have a pleasant evening. Good night.
Thank you.
Bye.